It is 7:01 and I am calling this fourth session of the Board of Commissioners to order. I'm going to conduct a roll call. I am here, President Franklin. Commissioner Brooks?
Here.
Commissioner Colbert?
Here.
Commissioner Blatt is, will not be attending and is excused. And Commissioner Prabhas?
Here.
Chief of Police, David Berth?
Here.
Director of Public Works, Darnell Bond. I know he will be here, but I guess he's not. Town Attorney's, Levon Roth, Alyssa Levon.
I'm sorry, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. And we have our Circuit Rider, Clayton Anderson.
The President.
All right. Oh, and we have our Special Assistant, Aiden Thomas. I don't think he has to be on the roll. We're all here. All right, so if we can rise to the Pledge of Allegiance, which is on the next slide as well. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands by nation, to God, to the people, and to the justice for all. All right, we'll move on to review of the business for this evening. We have the Economic Development Group Working Group Bylaws, Property Standards, Charter Update, Meeting Regulations, and Advertising. Are there any changes?
I wanted to see if either during this discussion or next discussion, we can talk about the Trinity Church Parking Agreement and also about the yard sale. Or if we're going to do that separately?
The yard sale, we can just talk about that separately. The parking agreement has been... Well, we can talk about that in administrative.
Okay.
Let me try. I don't forget when we... All right. So is everyone okay with the agenda as it is if I address that in the Administrative Update? All in favor of the agenda as is, say aye.
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 So we will move right into our business discussion. And we'll start off with the Economic Development Working Group Bylaws. Commissioner Colbert, this is your working group, so I'll allow you. You should take the lead. Well, you're their liaison.
Yeah.
Take the lead in the discussion.
My working group is a strong term.
Sorry, that was not the right phrasing.
So the town's Economic Development Work Group has put together these draft bylaws, which are emerging of the previous Sustainable Communities Working Group Bylaws, as well as the new requirements language that came under the new Town Committee's ordinance that we passed about a year ago, so that's all encompassed in here. Pretty much standard things for a town committee. We have the layout of the makeup of the board. A couple of things, I think I may have sent you an earlier version of this, so just a couple of things, minor changes that I noticed while I was going back through it. One, just acronym-wise, there's a couple of references to T U M E D B. That should actually be E D W in several instances. In Article Two, Section One, it says the board shall be made up of either three, two, five members. I think we got the agreement of the board that would be three, four, or five in order to ensure that there's adequate number to break any ties. And one of the last things is on the meeting frequency. Article Five, Section Two says meetings will be held fourth Monday of each month. That was changed to the first Monday of each month. And we removed the language where it says except November and December, and we added a line that says, "Changes to the meeting cadence will be discussed and agreed upon by the board prior to meeting in question." So that gives us the flexibility if there's any need to change things kind of on the fly, we can do that, and also communicate it to the membership prior to the meeting. So those are the changes that we had discussed prior. But I don't think they've introduced that updated version. Focus to look at.
I have questions. Sorry. So you have the, we have the chairperson, and we have the membership, and I think those two pieces are not exactly... So that you have the chairperson, then you say that there will be a Board of Directors, and it lists all these folks. Then when we get down to the membership, it says a member is any individual who expresses interest in it. Then it describes additional members, but it doesn't... So additional members have no formal vote decision, but I think maybe what's... It is an additional member is anyone who expresses interest?
Yes, so this is, so Membership Article Four is talking about interested parties and members of the Economic Development Work Group outside of the Board of Directors.
Right.
So this would be anyone else who has interest or, you know, wants to do the work of the committee. Prior to that is laying out the makeup of the decision-making body, the Board of Directors for the group.
So I don't, because this came from the committee.
Sure.
So can we change Article Three to say Chairperson and Board of Directors?
Sure.
And then on Article Four, or Four, Membership, can we say an additional member? Since they're called, they seem to be called additional members.
Sure, or maybe general body membership or something like that.
Yeah, whatever the naming is, can we make sure it's clear?
Sure.
I think that was all that I have. Anyone else have questions on the bylaws? All right, go. So we'll get the revised version.
Yep.
And maybe you can run those changes by the group?
Yep, absolutely.
And then we can vote on it?
Absolutely.
Sounds like a good plan. I think we're ready to move on to property standards. And I'm going to ask our Town Attorney, Alyssa Levon, to assist us as we go through this with questions. Do you want to do a presentation, or do you want me to present it? I don't know how much, what Karen left you.
I am perfectly happy to assist you.
Sure, just hear it.
She did not ask me to prepare a presentation on this ordinance.
Okay, so I will take, take that.
I can, I'm sorry, I can tell you that I noticed a typo right on the first page in Section One, first line, Property Maintenance Standards. And that's all I have to say at this point.
Oh, okay. I have trouble catching typos in all caps, so good catch. I guess it's a lawyer thing to be able to catch that. So these are the property maintenance standards. What we had asked was for standards that would allow us to basically adopt Prince George's County and implement their standards as they adjust. So this is those changes, as well as some recommendations to make sure that we're covering everything, like vacant property, what to do if there's an emergency situation. And, yes, removing the right to appeal to us as a board. That has been problematic in the past, and I think it also doesn't make sense for us to be making property standards decisions. So those are the changes incorporated. The other change is to move the code enforcement officer under the Police Department. I know we're calling it code compliance, but get it, right now, there's, they kind of report to the President, which is sort of problematic. It should be a staff member so that there aren't these issues where people are, people are getting these green cards and saying, "Well, I'm going to call the mayor." Like, that's not, that's not the mayor's role, isn't to make these decisions about things on the fly. It's not equitable. So does anyone have questions, thoughts, concerns?
I see that we removed some of the category violations. Are we going to draft completely different for the one sort of art show violation? Because it's a little bit, we're hoping that we can kind of make revenue.
So property standard enforcement has really never been a revenue stream for the town. And I don't necessarily see it as a revenue stream. I see it as a, you know, especially, like, it could become a revenue stream downtown if people aren't going to maintain some properties.
Right.
But my understanding on why the, yeah, that last chart that identifies category of violations was removed is that we would be cutting it down to fifty and seventy-five. Is that, Alyssa, do you know specifically about that, or if it's going to apply to the county standards?
I don't, which section are you referring to?
On page... We're in Section Fifteen, Violations, Fines, and Fee Schedules, and I know that Karen removed the chart because we're using Prince George's County instead of our own violations, so it didn't make sense to list out the violations and the fines when it's county violations. I guess the question is, what kind of, what, what are the actual fines when they come down to it? It looks like they're, in Item C, they're fifty for the first offense and seventy-five for repeat offenses.
So what I'm looking at, which is the one that's in the code, everything struck through on page seventeen of the packet?
Yeah.
Am I looking at the wrong thing?
You are, looking at the right thing, the correct thing.
Okay, so, so forgive me, the reason my hand is raised is that I am having trouble hearing, so I didn't hear the council member or the commissioner, apologize.
Oh.
At the outset. So I just, just to, I'm going to unraise my hand.
If we move papers on the desk, it infects it. We apologize, we'll keep our hands off the desk.
Oh, no, it's just generally the volume is not, mine's up as far as it'll go, so forgive me. I don't, and I don't know what your setup there is, it's just not very loud. So I would just ask the favor if you all could raise your voices as much as possible. All right, so I am looking at page seventeen of the packet, and you had categories of violations that are struck through. Do I understand you to be saying that that is because you are going to use the categories of violation from the county ordinance?
I think that might be what we need to discuss.
Okay.
Because if you go above to C, it seems like the way it's written now...
Yeah.
Right, fifty and seventy-five, and I'm not sure, particularly with commercial properties, that's adequate to deter people.
Yeah.
From...
I would say that's low, and I would be surprised if that's the county number, because it's very low.
It's definitely not the county number. The county number is per, it's itemized by different violations, yes.
Yes.
This is not, yeah. But I don't think we should adopt the county's chart, because we want to be able to just let the county's changes automatically change in the ordinance, the way it's...
Okay, so you want to say something like the fine shall, the town hereby adopts as to the following categories of offenses, the fine set forth in county, in county code, whatever?
I think that might be the question for the commissioners, because the county violations are quite large, right? And she, yeah, the county violations are quite large. I think the question for the board is, do we want to straight out adopt county violations? Or do we want to come up with a different number for ourselves, keeping in mind that our downtown properties that are flat, flat out not maintained also need to be a fine that's enough to get them to maintain the property?
Can we get the county violations, the list, that we can see, like, what it's comparing it to? I'm sure it's probably found online.
So Chief, the, the list of violations for the county is probably extensive?
They're worth fifty dollars. And my thought is that we may need to strike C, like, change it to say if it mirrors or reflects what the county says, because if you say it's only fifty or seventy-five, we're kind of stuck with that. But needs to say something along the lines that we're adopting their standards, if they don't change, then they'll change for us as well.
The, I guess my only other question about that is, the chief is saying if we adopt county fines, then they'll automatically change as county fines change, but legally, municipal infractions can't be more than a thousand dollars, so we're going to be capped by that limit, correct?
Yeah, I was just going to say that you are, there is a limit on municipal fines, and I don't know whether that the counties are subject to the same fines. I, I feel that they ought to be, but I don't know if they are. I mean, it doesn't make sense that they have a higher threshold for the same offense than you do.
They do.
And if that's the case, perhaps it's a LAR issue, but somebody who is, for example, I don't know, has high weeds on a property that's immediately outside your town shouldn't, right, you should be able to charge the same amount for a fine on the property next door, but that's a policy question.
Oh, no, I don't want to cut it. I was just going to ask if we could use a civil infraction to charge a higher fine.
No, no, you have two options for violation of a property maintenance fine, a property maintenance offense. It's a misdemeanor or it's a municipal infraction, and the municipal infraction fines and the misdemeanors for that matter are capped at a specific number.
Right, Commissioner Prabhas?
I was going to say, can we make the fee say the initial fine for residents would be, and then have a D that says, "The fines for commercials, businesses would be X, Y, Z."
You can make the fines, you can make different fines for different classes, that, yes, but you're still limited by the same cap.
So we also make each day of the infraction a separate offense?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
You wanted to say what?
No, that's exactly what I was going to say, because we split it out by residential and commercial, and on the commercial piece, just put language in there that cap's defined at whatever the municipal cap is. If it's a thousand dollars, we can say not to exceed, you know?
Right.
Commercial fines in alignment with county to not to exceed whatever the municipal cap is.
So with a municipal infraction, we don't say not to exceed. It, it is whatever the fine is. There, when you use a misdemeanor, you would say not to exceed, because the court makes a decision about what an, if it's a criminal offense, and, and a court makes a decision on that. With a municipal infraction, you just say what the fine is. That does not mean that the court might not cut it in half, but it's, you say a violation of this is a municipal infraction punishable by a fine of...
So...
Yeah.
What if the, what if the violation is severe enough that we have to have the county enforce it, because we cannot, within the fees, be hired if they enforce it? And is that cap still...
So that's the tactic we use to clean up downtown. Why there's so much actual cleanup happening downtown is we brought in the county, and county issue county-level fines, and that was enough to get people to start moving on maintaining some property, but there's still a lot that needs to be done down there. So I think the question is, once we adopt this, if we have that issue again, where we've got a property that just is kind of laughing at our municipal fines and our municipal violation letters, can we still call in the county and ask them to please swap some county-level fines on these people so that we can actually get improvement happening?
And then a little, a little bit extra, so then, does that person now have to pay just the county fee, or would, at that point, they be receiving two technical violations, one from the, from, one from the county and then one from the town? How, like, how would that work?
Did you hear all that?
I did not.
So, so we're, we're wondering if, after we adopt this, we can call in county if we need bigger fines than municipalities can issue. And if we do, if we, if the answer to that question is yes, can both the town and the county fine the property owner for the offense?
Well, I, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't, I've never had a client that has a code enforcement department have the county come in and write citations within its boundaries. I didn't, I honestly didn't know you could do that. I imagine that your code has a provision that says we elect to be governed by the county's property maintenance standards or, or something like that. Or, or otherwise, under the appropriate section of the state code relating to the applicability of county legislation within municipal boundaries, right? There are different ways you can accomplish that. So I imagine that somewhere you have an ordinance that does that. I'm gonna, I, I know you're considering or chewing on the possibility of codifying your ordinances, and I'm just going to put a plug in for doing that, because I, I, I find it extremely difficult to find anything in your ordinances, because you have to know what you're looking for in order to do a search on your code to find stuff. So I'm happy to look for what you're asking, but I can't just know where to go off the top of my head and find it.
Alyssa, I'm pretty sure that, yeah, I'm pretty sure that does not exist.
Okay.
So, but yes, the codification, I think the codification is just waiting for this, for us to approve this, and then it will go through.
Yay.
But I guess that question is, is there a way to embed in this, or would we do separately, where if, if we elect to ask the county for help in enforcing property standards, that would allow us to do that? I mean, we've done it, but...
So you've called them and they come, basically?
Basically, we have property owners downtown who are doing hero maintenance on their properties, and they are dangerous, and people have been injured. So we call the county. We ask, ask the county to come walk it with us and issue appropriate violations.
And they did.
And they did. Yeah.
Okay, that's good. I'm not, I mean, I, I just didn't know they would do that. Because usually in my jurisdictions, they say, uh-uh, call your own folks.
We don't have a robust, we have a more robust code department now, but at the time, we really did not have someone with the training. I think that's why they helped us out.
All right, so...
And the violations were, were severe than what we have where...
That's true. The violations were reached to a level that county regulations applied, and we didn't have town regulations for them.
Okay. Okay, so there's a section entitled For the Local Government Article that talks about the application of county legislation to municipalities. And there are different ways to accomplish the effectiveness of county legislation in a municipality. Like, usually, we're fighting for the, for our own ability to do stuff, and for the counties not to impose their stuff on us, but there are ways that you can do it, and I'll, will, as we go through this, I will have a chat with Karen to make sure that, whatever the format is that you're going to adopt this ordinance includes the appropriate language, to make sure that you have the option of having the county enforce their code in your jurisdiction. And the reason I'm sound hesitant is, it sounds like you want, you want the option to do both, to either use your own code enforcement officers and your own standards, or choose the county fines and standards depending. And I'm off the top of my head, not exactly sure how to accomplish that, but I'm not telling you we can't. I'm saying we need to mull it over a little bit.
Like, yeah, to clarify, the reason is because, and maybe if we get our fines to a higher level in those commercial districts, right now, our fines, it, it's not enough to get someone to actually repair.
Yeah.
And the county has fines that get someone to repair, so that's why we want that, and maybe we can solve that, just with our fine levels. But Commissioner Brooks has a comment or question?
So the code officer we have now, does, is he implementing anything downtown now?
I'm going to ask Chief to speak on that, because he supervises.
I know he does residence, for residence, but does, is he doing anything, any code enforcement downtown now, as of now?
Yeah.
Okay.
But what happens is, we are limited by our current standard as to what the scope of work is. So that's why we're trying to revamp and redo both property and commercial standards so that we have a clear understanding what we should, should not be doing. Also partnering with the county to make sure that, just give an example, what town, del burned down. There was nothing that the town could have done from fines and property standards, because we didn't have anything that rose to that level of the property being burned down, them not having the proper fencing, not having the proper permit to go back and fix stuff. So when they started demoing that building, there were items falling from the roof into the street. So we had to call the county, which then came out and forced them to put up the fence, you know, make sure that they had contractors who were doing what they were supposed to be doing. We don't have and did not have, and still don't have that level of enforcement. So that's why we're kind of trying to adopt some of their policy, or adopt their policy so that if we can't get someone to do something, that partnership with the county can then give us that next leg to enforce some of it. But if that happens again, even this is not going to, you know, give us any teeth to do anything about that, and property will sit for three or four or five years with nothing being done. And that's what happened. So when they started to get going, we enforced, you know, advised the county that, you know, we were limited in each of the issues, so they came in and helped move that process along.
We have to get a copy of county to...
So we, I mean, it's online. It's just, it's, it's a huge, it's not like...
Oh, you did.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's not really that we can hand you a copy, I don't think. It's...
I'll just read it, we can actually read it online.
Yeah.
But we do need something in, so what you said, we do need something in place ASAP.
Well, this is just, oh, this is, this is saying that our code enforcement officer can use the county standards and puts them in place, but I think, I just lost the thought of, what you were saying was that we need something now, what we have now just doesn't cover those commercial areas. Did I answer that?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
If I can't make it...
Oh, sorry, yes.
So in the commercial areas, what are we, what are we looking to address in the commercial areas? And we're looking at property maintenance standards, are we looking at signage? Are we, what are we looking to address in those commercial areas?
So I guess, kind of to give more detail what, to what the chief said, is we have a couple of things. Like, you've got properties that, you know, the paint is peeling and, you know, that... Like you've got properties that, you know, the paint is peeling and, you know, that, their awnings are, are old or have the wrong signs. So there's some signage. But we also have properties and, and this is not covered in this ordinance, my understanding, where ceilings are collapsing. People are in apartments that, you know, the Al's Deli above that, those were apartments that were not legally compliant with any property standards. And in violation of many things, so fire codes, et cetera. And so that's part of what the county did when they came up and looked at fire codes, rental codes, that kind of thing. And, and I don't think this contains it. I think we would still need to call the county out for those situations.
So that was my next question, right?
Right.
It's like, but with the structural issues, if there was a structural issue, you had a ceiling or roof or whatever the issue was, you probably couldn't address that issue. It would be county, correct?
Okay.
I'm just asking. That's how it would be, right? It would be county. Okay. That's like, that's what I was asking. If you've got a situation where on a commercial property, the bridge has to be pointed up, we would talk to county about that, right?
Yeah, our, our regulations are not that deep. And even the residential, if there was a structure that had some type of issue where say a car hit it, you know, our, our rules don't address that. So we would have to have the county come in with an inspector to say, okay, this property needs to be. We cannot, we can't condemn a property as the town government because we don't have facilities and equipment and stuff like that. So that's why another part of the adopting the county, that we can have that partnership with them. And they've already shown that they want to work with us and making sure, we're not asking, this is gonna be very rare that we go to them. It's gonna be something out of the ordinary or something real blatant, but other than that, we'll just do it all on our own. But obviously like an Al's Deli or when these people roof fell in, we have to go to the county on that. But outside of that, we're not going to them. So this is not something we're gonna be doing on a monthly basis. We may not even do it in a year, but we need to have that option.
So if I'm, I'm hearing where that question maybe is leading is that this request to allow the county to enforce the standards is really on, is maybe unnecessary. And I, I, well, I'm gonna ask the, the attorney, is, is that, are we asking for something that we don't need? Because we already have the ability to call them when things get that serious?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. But what I was gonna say is, what I was going to say is, I don't think that's what your ordinance does, right? You're adopting their standards, but no, nowhere in here does it say, and we're asking you to enforce them. We're adopting your standards and you're saying in fact that our code enforcement officer is gonna enforce them as I read it. That does not mean we can't, you can't accomplish what I hear you saying, assuming you decide that the answer to the question you just asked is, yes, you do need them to, to do it. But I don't think that's actually what this version of the ordinance does. Right? It's not an automatic thing just because you, you adopt their standards that it comes with a code, with a county officer to enforce them.
Yeah, I think it's just that those larger things, like we're saying, where there's, we know there's not adequate sprinkler systems or.
Right, right. And that's good.
Someone was injured. Yeah, okay.
Right. So I, I think I hear you saying there are two pieces of this. One is the actual standards. Cause you've got substantially substandard housing and substantially substandard, some commercial properties as well, right? And, and you wanna, you wanna take care of that. And then the other piece is how are we gonna take care of it? Who's, who's gonna be responsible for enforcing that? Is it gonna be town employees or is it gonna be county employees? And how do you get the county to do it? And if the county does it, can they enforce, can they enforce it under their own laws and therefore use their own fines? Or do they have to enforce your ordinance, which they have, you, they can do, right? So if you go back to this state law I was referring to earlier, there's a specific provision in it that says, by ordinance, a municipality may request and authorize the county in which it is located to administer or enforce any municipal legislation. And the county may do that on mutually agreed terms. There isn't in this statute, the opposite provision. It doesn't say by ordinance, a municipality may request and authorize the county to administer, enforce the county's legislation. There are other provisions about that, about how you can make the county or allow the county's legislation to be applicable within your boundaries. And that's the part I was referring to earlier. But it's not just a matter of saying, you county will enforce your laws, you know, will be the enforcement agent in our boundaries. I don't think that's the part I have to look into.
Yeah, and it is a little strange. Like I do get that as a stranger request. Part of it is we're county C and as Commissioner Pravat often says, this is their home too. So we should let them help us keep it clean. And part of it is that the fines we have are not motivating certain property owners. And that's when you get those bigger fines and that's where you can.
And so let me just add there that I do think you're on the right path there, that if you increase the fines to a substantial number, you're gonna see more enforcement. And if you do issue repeated citations, you're also gonna see increased compliance. And I don't, even though you can make an offense, an infraction, a new offense every day, I don't recommend doing that because the courts get annoyed. But, but certainly, once you take an infraction, if you don't get compliance, then I would say, start issuing them maybe every month. And if every month isn't sufficient, start issuing them every two weeks, right? At some point, somebody's gonna start paying attention and the judges are gonna stop being annoyed with you and start being annoyed with the property owner.
Okay.
And then you just lean the property. If it takes that, right? That you send the property to foreclose, to, you know, foreclose your sale because you've leaned it and they won't pay it? You know, so be it.
Okay. All right. So we'll, should we discuss amongst ourselves what kind of levels we would want for residential and commercial? So that we have that additional direction?
Yeah.
I don't think we're trying to lean residential properties.
No.
It's the commercial properties and the inadequate rentals.
Yeah, that's something.
I mean, do we think fifty and seventy-five for residential, but then if there's something bigger for residential?
A little higher.
Right.
I'm willing to go hard on the commercial and not hard on the residential.
Okay. I guess, Chief, can you give us an example of like a resident potential? Cause we, we don't want to charge a lot for residential, right? But there might be a case where something is dangerous. Is, is that residential? Like are we, if, if we go too low in residential, do we run the risk?
Yeah, you almost run the risk.
Cause these properties are converting to rentals over in Spring Branch, which is commercial use, right?
Right. And then you gotta also take into consideration that annexation, we already know of one property.
God, yeah.
If we annex that property, it's already problematic. And the county had to come out with equipment to remove items out of this property. So this is what, what we're setting now, we have to make sure that going forward, it's addressing those issues too. So, you know, we could say the fines are low, but then when we get to another area, they're having significant issues. Seventy-five and fifty dollars is not gonna be enough. Look at that with speed cameras, forty dollars, people are just paying and they're going, go to DC. Starting at a hundred and twenty-five. But that's the other part. As we annex and grow, we gotta look out for what's around us and what violations that's entering into. That's what we see. And we all know the one property up on seven twenty-five has huge issues when we annex that. Just walking in the door, there's problems. And the county has already been there for a week, so. And it's residential.
Right. I guess first of all, we, and, and this probably is just how we define, like a definition section, to say like that residential isn't owner occupied rather than a rental property. Cause the rental property, well, maybe we just need rental property standards as a separate thing when we get this done. But I think it's like, because there's a bunch of properties in Spring Branch Drive that are flipping over to rentals. And if we treat them like residential, then the people who are living there could wind up in situations similar to the people in apartments to downtown. At the same time, we don't want our, you know, our residents and ourselves, right? To be like having a five hundred dollar fine because we were on vacation for two weeks and our grasp was long. So we have to figure out what that balance is, I think.
The fines will progress up. So they're not starting at five hundred.
Right.
But the fines will progress upwards.
I think instead of saying shall establish fines starting at fifty dollars up to depending on, I don't know.
The attorney's advising that we have to like establish numbers. So, and maybe we leave fifty dollars for the first offense, but we make repeat offenses be a hundred and fifty dollars or, do you know what I'm saying? So that, cause most people who are resident of the town are going to just fix it when they see the green card. Or call our code enforcement and say, I need a little more time to fix it, which the code enforcement is gonna give them. So they're never gonna see any fine. It's really only the people who are not going to maintain their property that are going to see a fine, I think. But it might be.
Have been vacant properties in town that have been, I don't know. So there are vacancies that are problematic or?
Yeah.
Had to abate multiple times.
There's some that is almost like, it's part of the mowing schedule to do an abate.
I mean, but have to come like attractive nuisances with kids or crime and things like that. They're just vacant.
Only that county one that they just took care of.
Yeah, that was the thing. That's the goal.
That, that may be something you, you would like to look at with higher fines, you know, vacant property. Some properties that are public nuisances and all. Were causing.
So we could have a third, we could have a third category for vacant property, even though we have a vacant property ordinance. But we could have vacant properties, whether residential or commercial, have, almost have their first offense be a thousand dollars. Like properties vacant. Residentials could be fifty, commercials, maybe their first offense is five hundred? That's too high?
I think the county breaks.
Throwing out numbers.
Same category, residential, vacant, commercial. So you could look at their starting point and kind of see where you are. You don't wanna go too low.
Right.
You know, you wanna at least be equal starting out, you know, up to the max as possible.
Right.
Say look at their, their categories and kind of mirror somewhere around that.
Here's what I got. Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Excuse me. In this language, talking about repeat offenses is incorporated in that, is that someone who, let's say ignores the first violation? Like you get a, you get a citation, whatever it is, an infraction for fifty dollars. You have thirty days to pay it, you don't pay it. Are you then charged seventy-five dollars subsequently each month until you actually pay? Or is it legitimately, I got a fifty dollar fine, paid my fifty dollar fine, the issue crops up again in six months and then now I'm paying seventy-five? I think if, if someone is not paying that fifty dollars and it's accruing rate fees, fines or another offense each month
Right.
that it goes unpaid, eventually that's gonna be return for someone to.
Yeah.
To pay or to fix the problem. Are we, are we treating that?
How are we establishing? And I, I feel like it's in here, actually.
The DC Steve's tickets experience. After thirty days, their fine doubles and it doubles again in sixty days and so forth and so on, until eventually, you know.
We've had, so we've had people who ignored the fine and then we've had people who paid or corrected it. But two months later, three months later, the issue crops up again.
Sure.
Fixed it, crop up again. So it's, they're like repeating, they're fixed, but they keep doing the same thing for add nothing different.
Right. So I think, I think what I'm suggesting is to treat ignoring of the violation after a certain point as a sec, as a repeat offense, as a second offense and charge that higher or charge that next fee and compete continuously until you get to a point of whatever the remedy is, whether that be a lien or whatever the situation.
And I could have sworn that was in here, but I now that we're sitting here cannot find where it is. But let's make a note to do that so we can check it.
Cause I think that's a way to handle the, the residential piece, to keep it low, but to also encourage people to not continue to accrue fees or fines by not creating a situation. Rectifying the situation.
So do we have properties where we're sort of acting as a de facto property manager? Like, like you said, where every ninety days, we're going out there every ninety days.
Well, it's not even every ninety days. Yeah.
And then they'll get a notice and then they'll fix it and then.
They'll fix it or they won't, or, or Public Works will have to abate it. I mean, doesn't Public Works do a mowing abatement on a certain property on a regular basis all season long? Yeah.
And I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't have a chance to read the entire thing, but is there ever, for example, are, are we allowed to issue a notice? And say they abated, but sixty days later it's back again. Do we have to issue a notice again or can we just go directly to a fine?
I think that's in here, that we can go directly to a fine.
It goes to the fine. Cause we did have one property, one spring branch that paid it multiple times and personally paid it. And then they did it again and they pay. It's almost like they.
They wanted to do it, yeah.
They hired us as their moment.
Yeah, you're the de facto property, property management company.
But that's not what we're supposed to.
No.
This is a property, so.
I think that's in, I found section ten, but it looks like section ten might, we might wanna make some changes with this based on the conversation tonight. It's on page fourteen of the packet. So the repeat offenders are getting another courtesy notification for seven days. So. Yes. Yeah. So here's the question to, yes, that's the question, answer to your question.
Two violations in eighteen months. Two of the same.
Right. That way it's at least, if you get a violation at the end of the season, you're not getting that higher fine when we get to the beginning of the season. Or wait, eighteen months is, so what, yeah, eighteen months may be kind of a long time. Especially for commercial properties. What are you all's thoughts on?
What if section B does allow, if there are three or more notices for the same violation within a month, you can just go straight to an immediate fine?
What do you guys think about that fine?
Eighteen months.
Is that too long?
To me it is.
Yeah.
Or repeat twelve.
Okay. So we wanna change eighteen to twelve? Does that sound good to everyone? That was just what Commissioner Colbert threw out. We're all throwing out numbers now.
For the second.
So unless, this says property issued three or more notices for the same violation within eighteen, an eighteen month period, the property shall become subject to immediate fines. So three notices in a twelve month period is a year rather than a year and a half. What do you think?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
A year.
Okay, we're good with the number you threw out. Okay, we're good with the number you threw out, Colbert. Okay, and then I guess there's something associated. Also, with the same violations occurring, should we consider repeat? This should probably go to 12, too. Yes. We feel good about this, other than that, we can make these changes, work with the attorneys, and may potentially have it ready for next, to vote on at the end of the month, possibly?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I feel like I have to read it.
Yeah. It takes like multiple readings, and then you lose track of where things are. Okay, so Attorney Levon, do you have anything else to add before we move on to the next thing?
No. No, I'm gonna, you and I are gonna have to go over this again, because there's a lot that I have not been able to hear, I regret, so.
Yeah.
We'll spend some time.
I'll do a markup-
Great.
Based on the discussion. And then that should help. Okay. All right, we're going to move on to charter update, which, basically, I'm trying to set up the website for interaction on the new website, which isn't launching until next week. So we're not anywhere with the public engagement piece of the charter update. I guess this is more, do you guys have more questions or thoughts or things we should look at for that?
No, I think the last time we covered a lot, residents wants to-
Yeah.
We can, you know, if they don't have computers, we probably can get some copies, but it's, it would basically be online.
Yeah, staff has been advised and has copies and know where everything, because they have to give charter and its amendment. But it's a, it's, it's a pain to update both websites right now, because that's the place we're in. So it will launch next week, with the website launch. So that said, we'll move on to meeting regulations. I know that Commissioner Lot, and, oh, mine doesn't have one, but yours does, you all have some in there, yeah. Have brought this up, so we probably will need to discuss it again when she's here, but did anyone have any sort of initial discussion points?
I know that this is Commissioner Lot's thing, and I don't want to just freshen her nerves or that, like, her-
Right, definitely.
-tell us what she needs, but I don't have any sort of comment on this.
So if we don't have any comments, what I think we should probably do with this is actually bump into the August work session, where we can have more of a discussion about it. Everyone okay with that? All right, we'll move on to advertising, and I'm actually going to ask Commissioner Pravat to talk a little about this. We've had discussions about advertising, and where we're advertising, and how we're advertising, and sort of lack of attendance, or people still not knowing, so, you know, you have some thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard. Because in terms of the advertising, for example, I didn't know that the pork committee put a sign or banner there.
Oh, we can put a banner there, and we usually do, but we, that was one of the tasks.
Okay. So also, I, I just don't even know, like, the solution to the problem, to be honest. Because if I go to the playground and I meet a mom there, they never know about anything. So it's like, how do we reach out to the community that's here, that doesn't usually attend? Like, I love our regulars, but how do we get these new faces to, you know?
Well, maybe we advertise at the playground, like-
And engage them, and, yeah, I think simple solutions maybe to the problem, advertising at the playground. I spoke to the lady that you introduced me to, Emma Mall-
Our, our grant writer, who has-
What's her name?
Name is Adrianne Augustus.
Yeah.
So a grant writer, and she has extensive media experience.
And she emailed me, and there were a few things that we discussed about, like, just in general, about, like, the difference, I don't even know how to say this, I don't want to offend anyone, but sometimes, like, if you open a flyer, you know, from, like, the website, and it has, like, five different fonts and ten different colors, and like, how does somebody that's trying to process all that information? How does that, like, they just push it aside? And we discuss those things, and how important it is to have, like, a designer, and I know that the town is limited. So how do we get to a place where we could do some of that work, right?
Right. And I, I mean, I don't know how much you guys have noticed the change in the, like, just simpli, simplifying. That's something I've been working with staff on over, over years, right? Of trying to simplify, uniform, convey only, like, the most important information. But that doesn't, but I'm not a designer, right?
Like, our brand-
Right.
You know, like, we always use font X with color Y, you know, whatever, like, that's the sort of thing that I'm, it's like aesthetics along with how do we get to these other people that may seem maybe interested, but not reachable?
Right. Yeah, we, so we have, we actually have two fonts, and when we can't find them, we'll throw Arial in there. But that's because, that's the only one, because that, whatever that. So we have two fonts, we have a color palette that is, I believe, eight colors, though, just two yellows, two greens, two eels, a white and a cream. So using that, sticking with that font, trying to, without hiring a designer, that's what I've been trying to-
Yeah.
-get us, where I've been trying to get us. But I do agree, in talking with Adrianne Augustus, like, she's, she's our grant writer, but I think we should think about maybe asking her to do, one of the things she does for the police is different from the grant writing, because she does their social media, and she's been able to kind of, kind of, she's been able to professionalize and make it look a lot cleaner. Again, no offense to anyone, but like, when police started with Facebook, it would be like a picture of a flyer.
Right.
Now there are these really nice graphics that I think are communicating what we want. So one thing I can do, I can ask her to split, it's a grant downtime, I can ask her and do like a quick, short-term contract amendment to have her look at some of this, and we can see how that goes, like, two or three months. And then we can look at a longer term, because a contract that's going longer than a short time needs board approval. So that's an option, is for me to do a quick amendment with her, let her look at some of this, see what she says. What are y'all's thoughts on that?
Yeah, I agree with that, I mean, I re, I do remember her, and I think those ideas, professional, just blue and all them colors and the font, all that together would be helpful.
Yeah.
I mean, if people, hopefully that will attract more people.
Yeah, I, I think that's reasonable, did, I'm trying to remember, when we had Better City, didn't they develop or propose developing a brand handbook? Is that something that they produced that, or did we not exercise that option?
It's not exactly, we didn't, I don't think we exercised the whole handbook option.
Yeah.
We have a brand guide. I don't know if you guys, when you're in back getting stuff out of the staff room, in between two offices, there's this sheet with, that's the colors, those are our official colors.
Sure.
There's official fonts that go with it. And then all of, every piece that's inside that seal has been taken, well, the horse, the heron, the building, they've been taken out, so we have each of those pieces to separately, they're featured on our new website, and they were great. So that's some of the steps we've been taking, but I, again, like, it, you know.
But, um-
Professional advice would be helpful.
A lot of the advertising in that board, I was, like, uh, what are the-
We can have the V, oh, the VMS.
Yeah.
So the VMS boards can go there, well, so they can go, we put them in front of the stone building before, in the, you know how there's that stone building kind of across from where I am? The VMS boards can go there, but we can't, I don't know, you can, we can drive the VMS boards up onto the circle, but also the circle is S H A property. So, yeah, we throw banners in there, but popping a VMS board up there, I don't know if we start to get into trickier territory.
I feel like, who is owner of that?
State highway. They have to, because, and I just like to do this periodically, so that everyone listening and whatnot, if it has a number, it's a state highway. Old Crane Highway is a county road, Valley Lane is a county road. Everything else is a town road, is that right? Odenbuey's County, but it's also some, Star Trek parking on it, Duchess Drive County? It is? So there's a few county roads, but Elm Street, oh, and Water Street is state, state. So, yes, we can do, like, temporary things, but, yeah. I think signage is really the next thing. I know that Better City designed, has designed replacements for the signs that go around. You see, there's the big ones, they have the seal on them, they're blue, and they tell you where different things are. Better City has designed ones that are teal, the new logo, and the, our fonts on them. So they're working on doing that water, doing the welcome, welcome to Upper Marlboro signs, wrapping those. But I think, well, and with this money from the county to do economic development downtown, piece of the plan, I think, that we need is wayfinding signage that is changeable. Which also is like a, we have to be careful, because we don't necessarily want flashing signs everywhere, allowed everywhere in town. But I think maybe we need to look at a sign ordinance when we get to that. But I do agree, the signage is important, but we should also look at where are the places you're meeting people who don't know anything about it? Where are the places you guys are meeting people who don't know anything about it? And if you can just communicate where you are, that the people, you're interacting with people, that's a gathering place, and we can do the advertising in that gathering place. And that may strategically help solve the problem. Commissioner Brooks, I know you're talking to people everywhere, because you walk around all the time. Where, where are you chatting with people most?
New businesses, like, Julia Alexandria, new building, Frank decides 7-Eleven?
Yeah.
I go to 7-Eleven a lot, and they're almost babies.
Okay, so at that 7-Eleven intersection, it's tricky there, but-
In the back, there's like a concrete pad, and I put my kids there, and we sit, and we get our entry, and then randos come and talk to us, and we talk to them, and...
Can we catch up a little? So what are, so what are we trying to inform people of? I mean, meetings, events?
Everything.
I think all of the above.
Yeah, so at Marlboro Day, there was a woman that didn't even know what it was. She was just, I've lived here for three years, I have no, and I was like, I've lived here for three years, how do you not know? You know, like, and so I know that we get the emails, we get constant contact. The problem I see with those is, like, I'm guilty of it, like, even for me, how many times do you just, like, click away from it, or, you know, junk mail, or whatever? And so how are we really advertising these events that we are putting a lot of effort into, you know? And so getting more of our neighbors in the community there. You know, if we could even just have, like, your neighborhood pop up, it would be a party, you know what I mean? But there's like, nobody really comes, it's like, slow, and like, it's fun, but there could be so much more to that.
In this community, what's the, how do we go to get their information, do we know?
I don't think we do know, and I think what Commissioner Pravat is identifying is the real crux of the issue, because the demographics of our community, predominantly, people fall in this age range from Commissioner Pravat to myself, and we have kids who have sports things, we have jobs, we've got to get dinner on the table, we're running around, and we're distracted, too, even when we're home, because of the kids. And so the question is, how are the three of us receiving information, right? Like, when things are chaotic, and how are we pressing that information? It's almost like we have to ask ourselves that question to hit that same demographic and guess, or are, or are people just not interested in the things that we're doing, right? I think we're hitting, you know, we are hitting the neighborhood, and it's not that we're the only demographic, but if we want a large group of people to show up, that's the demographic we have to hit.
And are we scheduling things, you know, sometimes?
Yeah, they're not, they're not coming here to this meeting, that's never going to happen, because of the-
Or sometimes you can schedule an event, you may have an event elsewhere that's drawn away from the reason.
Mm-hmm.
Are we-
Competing event.
You know, how, how we're scheduling.
So that actually is a really good point, because you're talking about the movie night. I was talking about the movie night, I went to Shakespeare and Park in Riverdale Park. And it was a huge crowd, and everyone was there and hanging out, and there's different things. Like, it's more dense, there's more parking, they have a bigger one than Darnell's Chance House, it, it's, it's a different situation. But they were all talking about how, oh, they do their movie nights there, and I think part of the thing with, like, movie nights and, and what we're doing, we might want to strategize more, because Watkins does movie nights, you know, they're doing, the county does movie nights everywhere. And is the reason, and, and Commissioner Brooks, you can let us know what happened Saturday with the turnout, like, of how many people are there, but are we getting less and less turnout at our movie nights? Because there's all these other competing events, or competing movie nights, and people are a little, like, meh, not as interested, because we're trying to do the same thing as other people, when we should be trying to offer something different.
So that, about two, three weeks ago, they had the Navy people singing.
Oh, yeah.
I was exhausted.
Yeah, I was exhausted, I really wanted to go.
It was a lot of people.
Okay.
And it was very nice.
Good.
I think they had something there, I don't know, I saw, when you drive past that church, you'd see a flyer. I think they had something there.
They have I spot, yeah, they have a lot of events.
Mm-hmm.
Was it Darnell's house?
It's like, when I go to, because I go to-
Dunkirk is-
Right next door, Albert County.
Downtown towards Chesapeake Beach.
Yes, okay, I go there a lot to go to the playground.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's a good playground.
They have banners, and I, I know that banners are expensive, but they have banners, and the reason I go there is because I see the banner, and I'm like, oh, yeah, I'm going to that insectable thing with my kids. Like, and so the next thing you know, I'm looking it up and buying tickets. And so it's just like, I think some of the solution to this stuff is easy, but it, it does cost money for us. Like, to buy a banner, you need to fork out $300.
No, we can get them, we get them for like, two, less than a- No, we can get them, we get them for like, less than a hundred dollars through this to print.
Like, if you could do one that says like, movie night tonight, you know, it doesn't have a date.
I think we have some of those.
Another one, like, town meeting tonight, you know, and you put it right up at that stone building or wherever gives the most visibility. But the thing is really getting that out there into the outside public, people are commuting, they're going to buy their groceries, they're going to do a spicy, there's no reason why, in that case, they wouldn't see it. But I know personally, I've been to a lot of events just because of the banners, and I don't know about everybody else, you know, but I can say at least that, just like, literally just knowing and seeing.
I'm just gonna ask real quick, is it banner versus, because you know we have the A-frames? Have you seen the A-frames we have? Is it the banner is getting your attention more than the A-frames?
It's big, yeah, it's, it's just like something that I'm driving past, and I can see it, like, if you go to that playground, they have the banners at the front.
I, I know where you're talking about, those are district parks.
If you're making the right turn, you're looking at the banner, you're turning it in, and you're like, what is that, an Insectable festival? Like, yeah, I want to go to that.
Funny reason, I have a reason.
That's a big part, it's a bigger part.
It is a bigger part. And it's not like we want to put our stuff up at Watkins, because we can't handle that crowd.
Yeah, right.
But we do have a, we have a community center in town, we have a library in town, are we partnering with those organizations? I mean, I know sometimes we advertise their events and constant contact and whatnot, but, you know, maybe we can leverage those relationships as well. I'm sure people go to the library, I mean, our community center has a very nice playground, um, as well, and lots of events that people are frequenting every day. You know, maybe that's a place where we could put some information or talk to some of the folks there about advertising things that we're doing as well.
I know, back when I was just like a volunteer on the events committee, when we had an event, I would take flyers to the library and ask them. Put them out, and they would, um-
And some people do read the website, because everything is on the website.
Yeah. And people see it on Facebook, they see it on Nextdoor, they, they, we do, like, throw confetti at everyone.
Because on websites, it's telling.
And people see it.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I think the numbers go back to the demographics and hitting that group, um, to like, up those numbers.
Because I think some people that came to that little mini concert didn't live, even live in this town.
No, that was being advertised very well around, and we had it in the landings that is getting in the mail this week, um, but was handed out at Marlboro Day, so people had, there too, we've been advertising that. Um, okay, so some pieces of strategy and how we're communicating, we're gonna work with Adrianne to see how that does, and then we'll look at that long-term, and then some of it is identifying these places where people are. Our playground, easy, we can advertise there, we can talk to the community center to see if they'll allow us advertise there. There's some great signs at, uh, Questurin Center and Community Center. It's just a matter of whether we can get permission to put stuff on them, because, like, I know the library has to put stuff on our website, because our library, having an event, has to go through this process to get it on their Facebook. So we may hit that problem with those, but maybe-
Well, I mean, we can plan ahead, because if we know we have like, I don't know, National State in Blue,
Yeah.
Something in October-
Yeah.
That we can start asking about now, so that when October does come around, we've already checked off all of their boxes. All they have to do is put it up for us.
Right.
Stuff like that, like the Dunker Tree, you know?
Oh, the other thing we might be able to do is to use soil conservation, not at the playground, but you got to drive by, and soil conservation will probably let us put stuff there. All right, I feel like we have a plan.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so we will move on from that, on to administrative updates. Um, Commissioner Pravat would like a parking update on Church Street. So basically, the Church Street Lot has, or the, not the Church Street Lot, this is the Trinity Church Parking Lot Agreement. It's gone through multiple lawyers, it's gone through our insurance company, I actually just asked our circuit rider to help, we're, we're just trying to like collate all of these comments, and because I was trying to do it while, it was like a lot to hand off to someone else who would then figure out what it was, but not get it quite there, that's what's delayed it, is- So, I think after the conversation we had Monday, it's pretty much ready to go back over to Church.
Okay.
Um-
Is that okay if I can email the reverend and tell him like, this should be coming down, like, soon?
He's not gonna believe it, he'll actually send it, because I keep saying, I'm almost there, I'm almost there, I'm almost there, and something happens. But, um, Clayton will, when I check in with him on Monday from my vacation, he will say, do you want me to send that over? If, and that will be the cue, if I haven't sent it over, we'll get him to send it over.
Okay.
Um, administrative updates, Chief, do you have anything? Director Bond, I, is, Aiden, did Darnell get on? I don't know if he has anything.
I'm here. He is here.
I'm here, I don't think I have anything.
Do you have anything administrative?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Thank you. Um, all right, no other administrative updates. Um, I will, I guess the other administrative update to give you all is that we're getting all the resumes in and over to HR for the open positions, so they can filter through them and get us the qualified top candidates. Um, we'll move on to preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda. Um, oh, I have to co- public comment, yes. So, normally we don't do public, because it's work session, but if public would like to comment on anything while they're here during the work session, you can raise your hand if you're online, if you're in person, you can come up to the podium. Please say your name and street.
State of Marlboro.
Overdrive.
And I think she's on land, she's on a drive.
So, is this, thanks, I can comment about anything, or just what we've discussed?
Anything at all that you would like to talk about.
Well, mine's just about the C- names, um, you know, when you're deciding your fines, just know that it's fine when you're out and out of it. So, you know, if you're issuing five hundred dollars for a fine, not a lot of explanation. Uh, secondly, I know it's not part of our normal agenda, but I would like the Marlboro County Street pulled over from the Silas over to the Turkey Monolith. And, oh, I, and I have to drive a few minutes each while watching for an ice cream. I don't like an ice cream shop in town, I don't have any ideas, but yeah, like, my, like, the officials, they're on it for me.
I want an ice cream shop. That's, you're good?
Oh, and we love to you, because recently the county changed trash pickup days, and they had a very large campaign to tell people about it. And people were like, oh, you know, I mean, yeah.
I know.
It's a struggle.
Okay.
Oh, that was terrible, I saw that.
Okay, wait, wait, we can't talk while they're talking.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm just gonna take all the comments before I address anything. Are there any online, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, Linda Moore, Spring Ranch, uh, I'd like to know the, what is the timeline to clean up the mess that they made tearing down those buildings? Uh, that's a little bit of a nightmare, but, um, Spring Ranch Drive, there is a truck that like to park right on the curve, and it obscures your vision, when you're coming out like it came from my home, and you got to come out and-
Sorry.
And come out, he parks right on that curve.
Um, as you're leaving the subdivision or at the curve from the circle?
The inside of the circle.
Okay.
And he parks right there, you know, when you get to inch out to see that no one is coming, I mean, he obscures, every now and then he puts it further up, which is fine, he really took out his vehicle, truck, um, from there.
Okay.
And that does create a problem.
Okay, so I will talk with staff about that.
I noticed, you know, over the weekend, you do have to really get out there before you can, I need to turn.
Okay.
Safely.
Okay. Um, anyone else, anyone online, Aiden, that wants to speak?
Not at this time.
All right, um, I just want to quickly address two of these items. Um, Barbara Town Streets, I am meeting with Barbara Town HOA leadership and their, uh, management company, I believe, next Friday, so hopefully that will be able to get us rolling and get this back on the main agenda. Um, as far as parking issues, we will talk internally about parking issues. I do want to just make sure everyone understands that, you know, at the level we have of police, we cannot provide twenty-four, seven service, so there is, and code enforcement isn't here on the weekends right now. So, while there is a flexible schedule and they are here at odd times, we cannot consistently provide, um, be able to address these issues on the weekend. Uh, so, that's that. Uh, with that, we'll move on to the preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda. Um, and I think it's just, um, continuing property standards, hopefully approving those and the bylaws. Um, I don't know why it's this charter review discussion, charter update discussion, if there's anything there. Police space, which we were hoping to talk about tonight, but we're just still working through negotiations, and while it's a negotiation phase, we can't really, got it here. Um, and then, I put meeting regulations, but I think because Commissioner Lot wasn't here during a work session to have a conversation, it's best if we move that to the August work session. Okay, so we'll do that, or is there anything else anyone thinks should be on there that we missed? All right, so we'll go forward with that agenda. Um, and we are going to go into, I think it's, that's the rolling agenda, and I, I don't think I put the slide on for the closed session, so I'm just gonna read this into the record, because we're getting ready to close this meeting and go into closed session. Um, so the Board of Commissioners is proposing to go into closed session following the board work session under General Provisions, Article three dash three oh five B one, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. The Board of Commissioners proposes to go into closed session following the board work session on Tuesday, July ninth, to twenty twenty-four at seven P M. to discuss a personnel matter. Uh, is there a motion to go into closed session?
We'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Um, that was unanimous of members present, we are going to go into closed session, we will adjourn for five minutes. At the moment, um, we'll go into a different room, so y'all don't have to rush, but-
You too.
Will you be taking me with you?